Mike, are we ready?
All right.
Welcome to the May 5th, 2011, meeting of the Milton Planning Board. My name is Alex Whiteside and I'm the chairman. And with me are...
Bernie Lynch, member.
Emily Innes, member.
Ed Duffy, member.
Peter Jackson, member.
Diane Colligan, secretary.
Bill Clark, planning director.
All right. Now, I have, on the April 14 minutes, I have a number of changes and I suggest that we let Diane make them and then we'll consider them anew at our next meeting.
Given the number of changes, I think that's reasonable. Happy typing, Diane.
All right. Our next meeting is going to be next week, May 12th, here, Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Here in the Carol Blue Conference Room in Town Hall. And then we're going to meet again on the 26th.
Same place.
Here in the Carol Blue Conference Room at Town Hall. All right. The next item of business, we're going to reorganize the planning board and I'm going to accept nominations for chairman. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate for chairman Emily Keys Innes.
All right. Any seconds?
I'll second him.
Any other nominations? All right. Let's close the nominations and let's see how she does on the vote.
No discussion?
Are you going to ask me if I accept it?
Oh, yeah, does she accept the nomination?
All right. I suppose that we can, we can discuss the nomination if anyone cares still. It sounds like a good nomination to me.
I think that would be an excellent nomination.
All right.
I second it, I agree.
All right, okay. That's enough discussion. All in favor of Emily Keys Innes as chair or chairman? I think that chairman now is sort of a unisex term and...
I am fine with chairman.
Okay, fine. Emily for chairman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I turn the meeting over to you.
Very well. In that case, we need to elect a secretary. Do we have any nominations for secretary? Mr. Duffy?
Madam Chair, chairman, I nominate Peter Jackson for the position of secretary.
Do we have any seconds?
I'll second.
Very well. Mr. Jackson, do you accept?
Sure.
Are there any other nominations? If so, we'll close the nominations. Any discussion? Yes.
I was part of the reason Peter came on this board five or four, five years ago and he's done remarkably well, good work for us and he will certainly be a good secretary and so I wholeheartedly nominate him.
Very good. Anything else? All right, let's move it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Pete.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is citizens speak. Now, we are going to have a public hearing for 131 Elliott Street. It is the only item of business on our agenda, so if you plan to speak at the public hearing, please hold your comments for that. Are there any citizens who wish to speak on anything else? Okay. In that case, we are going to...
Through the town planners report.
Yeah, we've only, we've got two minutes. Bill?
I see it as one, so...
You have one and a half.
Under the wind turbine, Corey Hills Associates requested from DEP a superseding order of conditions denying the project. DEP had a sitewalk this morning to the, for the project. I was there. The Milton's Wind Team was represented by Mr. Kleiman and Mr. Ives, our wetland specialist. Conservation Commission had Kathy Bowen there and Corey Hills had their team of consultants there. East Milton Square Parking and Access Study, the Business and Citizen Advisory Committee met last night. They met as a group for the first time without the consultant and they're trying to take and prioritize the potential recommendations for the final report. They'll meet again next week. Next week, we'll be with the consultant. We'll be in this room. We will be televised, we hope. The annual town meeting was Monday and Tuesday, so we were there. And I'm writing another RFP for the selectmen.
On?
Yulin Rinconcession stands.
Interesting.
That's it?
That's it. That takes us very neatly to 6:40 as well. All right. In that case, we're going to open the public hearing, the continued public hearing on 131 Elliott Street. Mr. Connolly, would you care to join us with your representatives? And if you could introduce yourself and your representatives for the meeting.
Sure. My name is Stephen Connolly, applicant, 131 Elliott Street. I have Warren Daniel, Daniel Architects, and Bill McDermott, who is the attorney for the project.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Now, as of our last meeting with you, not our last planning board meeting, Mr. Whiteside as chair had prepared a series of, or a list of questions as to how the project met certain aspects of the zoning. And I believe we all received today, yes, gentlemen, your response, or your, Mr. Daniels' response, to those points. And so, my understanding is that our first order of business will be to, for you, to walk us through these points and your response.
Okay. I brought some extra copies if anyone needs or wants some. Are you all set? Okay. Okay.
Before I begin, I need to be consistent too. And my client informs me that he has a standing objection to the presence of one of the members, Mr. Jackson, based on his belief that Mr. Jackson has a conflict of interest with respect to another project in the business district area which has not been completed and which a reasonable person may be able to conclude that it creates an appearance of a conflict of interest. So, we don't want to waive that for the record. That's why I stayed in here tonight.
Good. Thank you very much. Please continue.
Okay. The, Warren Daniel and, had worked and sent us some draft responses during the past week and we've been back and forth on it, had a meeting yesterday, came up with what we think answers that may assist this project to move forward. A little bit of background, which I know that most of you are aware, by the way, I was here in October. I came to one meeting on the board and this is my first time back. My client bought some land, as you know, and has a purchase and sales agreement with the city of, our town Milton for the purpose of obtaining additional land to complete this The process which he went through, including, included contact with this planning board, the board of selectmen, the warrant committee, the Milton Village Central Avenue Revitalization Committee, Milton Hill Association, and the Columbine Cliffs Neighborhood Association. His previous architect had several meetings with each of these groups and presented a plan to those groups, which is different from the plan here today, but not substantially different. The plan here today, in this iteration, is a bit smaller, maybe 16 percent smaller than what was presented to the neighborhood and to the revitalization committee. And that, the, the building that has been pre-proposed, that you see here today with those slight changes, is the building which these groups, including the revitalization committee and the Urban Land Institute, were looking to see. Now, then zoning was put into place, creating this PUD district, and as a result of that, the zoning was tailored to a multi-story mixed-use development, which is what this development is in fact. And the, the design, as I read, the zoning section J gives a great deal of, of judgment to this board. It has a great bit of discretion, you can look at it at a particular requirement and assuming that it meets zoning, you still can make comments about what you would like to see there. And we're hoping that these explanations, responses to each of the 25 points are something that you would be able to approve maybe in a great part. I would think some of the, some of these points are particularly, they're mapped, they're just, you know, how many square feet is the building? What is the lot coverage? What is the height? What is the FAR? How many units do you have? What's the parking? We've addressed all of those answers here and I think that probably fits the criteria of about 13 to the 25. We have, we don't have a response to number 25 today because that is the cumulative effect of what the final plan is. And the architect is well aware of what his responsibilities are under the zoning to do that, but he didn't attempt to do that today. But what he did, what he did attempt to do is provide the board with the answers to the questions. Before he begins, is there any sense from the membership as to how many, if any, of the points that we have placed on the paper are acceptable?
Unfortunately, and I'll speak for myself and allow the other members of the board to discuss it, I don't have access to personal email at work. I can see that I've received a message, so I haven't actually had a chance to read this.
I was looking for a sense, I'm not looking for a vote.
Yes. No, 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 no. Understanding, but I have been able to skim through most of it, but I received it after I got home from work before coming here. I don't know if the other members are in the same boat or not having had a chance to fully read this. I know some of you also work but have more access to your email than I do.
I first saw this eight minutes ago.
Okay. So, I think that looks to be fairly similar. So, I think while he goes through, it would be very appropriate.
Can I say we ought to go through them one by one?
Excellent.
And we'll find out what the sense is, I suppose, and get some feedback.
Excellent. That sounds great.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you think it would be better if I read through the whole thing and then go back to discuss the points? Or do you want to go point by point with stopping and discussing?
I, I think reading through it probably wouldn't help, but point by point so that we can go through it in order and also for the people at home who didn't have access to either the original document or this one.
Great.
Okay.
Mr. Daniel, can I have a couple of copies of the...
Sure.
Thank you.
And you don't necessarily have to read every word, just summarize the argument and then discuss why your response is the way it is.
Okay, good. Number one, the first paragraph, and you understand the format, is copying the question. So, this is J1 and requires us to provide significant amenities to the public. The public amenities include a brick courtyard at the corner of Central and Elliott Street. This courtyard is lined with historic-looking field stone retaining walls, wrought iron fences, and historic lighting. The courtyard is heavily landscaped and will contain benches, trash receptacles, and a stair connecting to Elliott Street. It serves as the entrance to the business use on Elliott Street, on the Elliott Street facade. In addition, the Central Avenue sidewalk will be built to blend with the brick hardscape of the courtyard and will contain business entrances. The residential condominium entrance is on Elliott Street and will be landscaped with elm trees and fruit trees and several other species, and a seating pergola near the building entrance. Please refer to 22 below, which also deals with public amenity information. So, I could go to that or wait till we're on 22?
Yeah, clustering them together would be acceptable.
Yeah, okay. So, 22, which seemed to me to be a similar issue, usable open space development should respect natural features of the site. The site is at Elliott Street and Central Ave corner, blending business use and residential use. Along the Central Ave, along Central Avenue is a brick sidewalk which leads into the courtyard which runs along Elliott Street and connects with an outdoor stair onto Elliott Street. The courtyard will be an outdoor seating area with benches, lighting, planting available to the public. It will be available for public use for outdoor picnics and dining. Further up Elliott Street is a large lawn area with brick sidewalks leading to a pergola with benches, lighting, and planting for public amenity. So, those are really two ways of stating the same information.
Okay. So, just, just hold on there. Does anybody have any questions on this particular point, on the public amenity?
Does anyone have any question? I hear what they're saying. I certainly will look at the plans, but I'm certainly not going to concede that that's a significant public amenity.
Not asking for a vote, just wondering if there are questions.
All right. I'm simply saying that I'm, I'm willing to look at the plans. It seems to me that if this courtyard is in fact going to be designed so that it gets intended public use, that, that would be helpful. But it's, I don't remember exactly what the courtyard looks like. And as I said, if I had received this more than eight minutes ago, perhaps I would have looked at the plan and perhaps I would then would have had some questions as to the courtyard and the sidewalks as a public amenity. So, I reserve judgment and certainly don't, you know, are not going to be concluded.
Eddie, Bernie, any questions? No, not Bernie, Pete. Pete and Eddie.
I'd like to say just, Madam Chair, the courtyard, I think it's attractive in its positioning and its size. I caution against idlers, however. And I just draw the attention to all of us, to the place, right across the tracks, just right across the tracks, 20 feet or so. And I was on my bicycle recently down there and, not just the last time, but many, many times, I got, get on the, exit the bicycle path there, there's an awful scene there. It has become a dumping area. And that's on the Milton side. So, I think somebody has to, has to take care of that even now. Just stop the dumping and I just caution against any idling at the corner here. I don't know how you're going to control it, Steve, but I think it has to be done. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Pete? I mean, I think we need further discussion. I don't consider the description here of these amenities as really amenities to the public. I think the brick sidewalk and things like that that are described are streetscape improvements as would be anticipated. When the zoning requires to provide significant amenities to the public, I expect some kind of significant amenity. And so, I think the items that are listed here are a, a basic streetscape treatment. I am concerned about the courtyard in that it's sunken below Elliott Street level, so, you know, people are out of view and it's down below and I don't think that's a real attractive situation to have it sunk below street level.
Okay. And just for the sake of the architect and the developer, can you be more specific on significant? Because I suspect that's something that they've been struggling with, is our saying we want significant amenities and they need, they need to know what our definition of significant is.
I think, I think at an earlier meeting, I described what I thought a significant, reasonable significant amenity at this site would be. So, I, I think that still stands. I think a significant landscape plaza at the corner of Elliott and, and Central Avenue would be something, kind of replacing in feeling the, the character that used to be there when that was the gathering place for the ice cream shop, the tables and, and stone walls and people would sit there and, you know, see and be seen. And I think that kind of amenity was anticipated in the ULI report. That, you know, is more of the scale of amenity that I would expect to see.
Thank you.
I have a...
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
But I, I have another suggested amenity, which I could think about. The subway stop is not attractive and I think that if they were to come up with some creative ideas to make it a pleasant place to wait for the trolley, you know, that could easily be a significant public amenity in conjunction with, with other things, but...
Bernie, do you have any...
No, I like all the ideas.
Okay. Great, excellent. Eddie, do you have any definition of significant amenity that you'd like to...
No, just what I stated earlier.
What about athletic facilities in the back?
Athletic?
Yeah.
I mean...
Playground.
Bowling green and playground of athletic, it's an amenity.
Well, I haven't, I don't know what's going in the land, what they call the landscape area out.
I'm talking back in where the parking lot is. There could be, there could be...
Lot lot?
Yeah. I mean, there could be. I mean, it's simply a question of what might be a significant amenity.
What is the board's definition?
They want, they want the thoughts about that and it seems to me that might be...
One question, oh, sorry, go ahead, Eddie.
I would certainly go for a very small park for the smallest children. I'm just wondering if it would fit in the landscape area rather than the rear area.
You mean so close to the tracks, that rear area?
Yes, and so close to the traffic. One could be put in here, just so that there was some destination for the neighbors to... So, that's just a suggestion. I don't know what, I haven't seen what's, what you have in mind for the, I think it's small.
Right, it's, you can basically see it up on the site plan there, the top left.
So, you easily could have an area for...
Yeah.
Lot lot. Thank you, that would be significant.
One, one thought I had too, just to open this up, is how much do you consider the parking there and that it can be used for, formed by the public and can be used off-hours? And that needs to have a discussion as to how it's controlled, but it seems like that's an amenity.
I think we'll be discussing parking in detail, so that's a good point to bring up for that. I do have one question before we move on to number two, which is you've mentioned two landscape areas, the courtyard area and then the area around the entrance that we were just talking about. Is that fully acceptable to the public, that second area?
Yes.
Okay. So, both areas would be completely with the public?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Point to me.
No, that was, I was raising my hand.
I'm sorry.
Rather than accusing you of anything.
He was trying to get it within my vision. On you go, Alex.
It seems to me that, that public should have some input as to what significant public amenities are and somehow they should get a chance to, to pitch in their ideas.
I absolutely agree. I was hoping that we'd get through the majority of the points and then allow them so that they could respond to more than one point simultaneously.
Okay. But if there are 25 different points that they're supposed to be responding to...
Maybe we'll break halfway through and let them go.
Okay. I just, it just seems to me that meaningful public comment is important.
I agree, absolutely. Number two.
Okay. Two, there must be a business use in the portion of the street level of the building adjacent to and accessible from the street or the setback area with a minimum depth of 50 feet. Business use includes entrances and parking, parking, and exits. Parking is not a business use. Business use shall occupy an area of no less than 50 percent of the principal floor area. So, this gets into some calculations, obviously, and numbers. The business area, as we've designed it on the ground floor, is 5,272 square feet, access from both Elliott Street and Central Ave. In addition, there is 2,588 square feet business space on the first floor, above the ground floor, business space. The ground floor business space has a street frontage of 147 linear feet. The street frontage of the adjacent parking garage north, entry to the north of the business space is 45 linear feet. The business use on the ground floor is 72 feet along Central Ave and 82 feet, which is the depth along Elliott. The depth, depth from Central Ave is 82 feet, satisfying the 50-foot minimum depth. The indoor parking is important to locate most of, I don't think the grammar is too good, but it is important to locate most of the parking in the building. There are 61 garage spaces and 31 outdoor spaces. To reduce the number of indoor garage parking would locate more parking on the site, reducing its aesthetic appeal and reducing its fitting with the neighborhood. The proposed open green space will better serve the environment by providing a large permeable site area. The available business use frontage is 192 linear feet on Elliott Street and Central Ave. The designed street frontage is 147 linear feet or 76.6 percent of the available.
Gentlemen, any questions or concerns?
I think that unfortunately, whether or not it's more attractive or not, spaces 21 through 26 are in area which the zoning requires be used for business use. Additionally, spaces 19, 20, and the additional space, and perhaps 18, are in areas that the zoning requires be used for business use. And whether or not it is more attractive to do something else, board, as I made clear last time, cannot waive the zoning. You can't waive it. You've got to comply with it.
Anyone else? Pete? Now, you understand what our concern here is.
I do, sure. Can I ask a question? It's evidently your interpretation that the business use must be 100 percent of the frontage on Central Ave and that's in the zoning?
Yeah. That's, I mean, that's why I quoted this.
That's Elliott Street, I think. Back to spaces 21, 29.
I mean, if you go to J4A, hopefully, we'll find it there.
Okay. I, of course, stupidly don't have my...
Your zoning, all right, okay, fine, we won't go to J4A.
You can go to J4A.
Okay, we have a copy.
The first sentence.
Okay.
Okay, you can, you can roll that over and your lawyer can make a legal argument as to what that sentence means, but I think I know.
I mean, I, I think there's some ways to work with the design and I think we're a long way from doing that. But I, you know, for example, and this doesn't really show the, the parking layout inside here, I think having the entrance to the, to the parking there makes sense because it's the only place to foot it, whether it's here or whether it's close to the tracks. But the rest of the frontage, other than the entrance, I think should be commercial. So, this, this part of parking could become a commercial space or if you had the entrance come to the, right near that facade of the building and then had this contiguous as the commercial space, you know, I think, I think that would do it on the Central Avenue side. On the Elliott side, I think it's a little more difficult. You've got commercial here and I don't know exactly here where the commercial zoning ends on the other side of Elliott Street. You know, it's, I know it's, appears on a site plan somewhere. But, you know, an argument, if you wanted to try to make an argument that you've got commercial as far as the end of the commercial district on the other end...
You answered the point one.
Um, well, I'm not sure exactly where it is. There's, there's the residential here, but the commercial across the street, you need this, you need something that shows the other side.
Yeah, and we'll talk about that as well later.
So, you know, that's a way to conceivably make an argument.
I don't understand, what is that argument? Pete, again?
Well, we need a site plan that shows, shows the context.
Yeah.
Because across, across Elliott Street from this side, the commercial only goes partway up the street.
He's talking about the commercial buildings, not the commercial zone.
The commercial zone on the other side of Elliott Street.
The revitalization committee had lined up the Elliott side of the, Elliott Street side of this building with the end of the commercial buildings across the street. So, he's talking about the commercial buildings, not the actual commercial... So he's talking about the commercial buildings, not the actual commercial district, is that correct? I think we were thinking two different types of commercial.
That's right, there's the, this site, and part of this, that goes back to the whole thing about doing some site planning.
Right.
There's, this site contains both commercial and residential.
Yes.
And then it's in a context of both commercial and residential.
Residential, so where do you draw the line?
How do you draw the line, and how can you interpret that, you know, to give a little flexibility, but that's.
Yeah.
Right, that's the legal argument that they're running.
Perhaps, might, might be forthcoming.
And we may all be arguing different sides.
But I'm not sure, I'm not sure I could buy it.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe not, but it, but I see, well.
Yeah. On the Central Avenue side, I think it's clear how, you know, it should be commercial, although the quote in here is that the parking entrance does count as business space, so that would be acceptable. The question of where to locate the business space, I almost prefer it one, one unit away from the tracks so that you could put something commercial right on the tracks there and have that in fact be part of your public amenity.
And I would act like two ways.
Maybe that could sell things to people waiting for the train.
Absolutely.
Or maybe it could be a bike rental related to the bicycle path.
Or ice cream and drinks for the bicycle path, something like that, or both. But, but that.
Site planning, we're hoping to have a discussion of at some point.
I think as we work through the points, it'd be a very appropriate time to do that. So you, you see where we are with that point?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent.
For me, that helps.
I'm just trying to find it on that.
Okay. We'll, we'll no doubt come back to it as well. And as we go through and, and give sort of our, our view and our response, please don't hesitate to, to make sure that, you know, you've gotten everything from, that you need from us.
Right, right. I think, yeah, a key point which we need to discuss some is the potential for commercial space on the, on the corner next to the T, as you're talking about, and it's a, you know, relatively small space.
Right.
Given the configuration of the parking, but that's something we need to discuss. I think it's, you know, interesting.
So, number three.
Okay, three. Moving right along. FAR shall not exceed 1.5 times the area of the lot in the business district. The business lot area is 35,525 square feet. The total proposed floor area of the building is 53,281 square feet. This is seven square feet less than the allowed 53,288. Hope I wrote all those numbers right, which is derived from 35 point, 35,525 times 1.5. So that's the math.
Everybody satisfied with that one?
I'm not satisfied because, of course, we haven't seen any final plans to do a determination of. No one has confirmed these measurements, and all we have is a concept plan, so it's obviously a little premature. I make the point.
Yes.
I make the point, but it is subject to confirmation, and the plans that we can actually confirm.
So in your final set of plans, make sure the numbers.
In other words, you're just on.
I, I understand.
On notice.
Although, with due respect, these, these have the same dimensions, the same degree of information and dimensions as the previous ones that these are based on. So factually, they, they have enough to come up with, with good square footages.
In other words, if we went to your previous plan.
Right.
And cut off part of the building, and then, but this is something actually you could have done and given us the plans.
The point being that when we get to the final plans.
These do have dimensions on them.
Before we issue the special.
Right, I understand. These aren't the final plans.
Right.
But they have dimensions, so you can, anybody can confirm or, or not the calculations. So, they're, yeah, they are conceptual plans, but there is more information than just pretty pictures.
All right, and four is also a mathematical calculation.
Yeah, and four is a calculation. Do you want me to read that?
Might as well, so that people know.
Okay. The building shall not cover more than 50% of the business lot. The business lot is 35,525. The building at ground floor level covers 15,756 square feet, which is 44.4% of the business lot area.
And again, it would be the same thing as before, make sure that the final plans match those numbers.
Right, right.
Okay? All right, now, number five on the basement, definition of a basement.
Okay, this, this is, gets a little interesting. The question or the point, height is limited to more than four stories, not including a basement area. The ground floor is a basement per the Mass Building Code, Massachusetts Building Code, 780 CMR, the eighth edition, section 202. The code defines a basement as that portion of a building that is partly or completely below grade. Our ground floor is partly below grade. Further, a basement should be considered a story above grade, and this is how they kind of back into the definition of basement, shall be considered a story above grade when the finished story is, one, more than six feet above grade plane, two, more than six feet above finished ground level for more than 50% of the total building perimeter, or, three, more than 12 feet above the finished ground level at any point. So point one, the ground plane is defined in the code as a reference plane representing the average finished ground level adjoining the exterior walls. The average finished ground level is 5.85 feet below the first, finished first floor, so slightly less than six feet. The building is six feet or less above the, the grade level for 56.9% of the total building, and the building is less than 12 feet above the finished ground floor at any point. The three points defining our ground floor as a basement are satisfied.
Any questions?
No, that's, once again, that's something that we're going to, we're going to have someone determine, we're going to actually have an engineer determine, yes.
Are we?
I'm not going to, well, I mean, if, if.
I'm just.
I believe we're going to have an engineer determine, because if we don't, we will be not doing our job. But I would listen to other, I mean, if people here can determine.
Engineer determines.
These matters, I'd be happy to hear them volunteer to do so.
Yeah, I don't know.
Come back to that.
But we, we will certainly have our engineer look at that, if you'd like that solution.
And, sorry, I mean to interrupt, just a reminder too, I don't recall seeing it here, I'm not sure we added it, but to remember that the first floor is supposed to be 11 feet in height.
Right.
Okay, so, so you're, how high are you planning for the basement floor to be?
11 feet.
11 feet, and then the first floor also 11 feet?
Uh, 10 feet.
10 feet.
Yeah.
So you're kind, wait, you can't count your ground floor as 11 feet and then count it as something else as the first floor. Your first floor, your proper first floor must be 11 feet in height.
Uh, I think.
According to the zoning, it's D, 4D.
The principal floor?
The height of the first floor, not the principal floor, the height of the first floor.
Okay.
So if your ground floor is a basement, the floor above it will have to be your first floor with 11 feet in height, which is going to be tricky because that 11 feet in height was meant to be for the commercial area.
Yeah.
Which is partially on your ground floor.
Right, and we, having the bulk of the commercial, have made that 11 feet, and all the other floors above it are 10 feet, so that's something we have to.
We'll have to discuss, yeah.
Do something about.
You can consider the ground floor the first floor, but you don't have to consider it a story.
I think we're going to get into real legal arguments on that one, so I think it's either going to be your ground floor or your first floor, but whatever, whichever one is your first floor, according to the zoning, has to be 11 feet, so.
It's either the basement.
Yeah, it's either the basement or the first, and 10 feet.
Or if it's not the basement, you've got too many stories.
Okay, I'm just pondering, if we have business on two different levels, does that mean that each would have to be 11 feet, or does it mean that only the first floor would have to be 11 and the basement could be 10 feet?
The full sentence, just for anybody who doesn't have their zoning, says, "The height of the first floor shall be a minimum of 11 feet to encourage and facilitate the use of the space for retail or restaurant use."
Yeah.
So, it's something we're going to have to.
Okay.
Work out.
That's a bit confusing, because I know the intent of it, you know, we wanted commercial at the, on the ground plane level, you know, adjacent to the sidewalk, so it would make sense that that's what we would want to be, 11 feet. So, you know, it does say first floor. At this site, the, the basement is the entry level, really.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the sidewalk level. The ground floor, really. Where we would want the commercial space.
On the other hand, we haven't gotten to the discussion of setbacks yet.
Right.
And one of the questions will be, and you've addressed it, but I'm sure we'll discuss it further, is how far you've set back. So it may be that at street side, you have your ground floor, first floor, second floor, third floor, so four stories, and in the back, you have your basement first floor. So you see what I mean, is you may be able to do your argument going back to what's a floor and what's a story. We may be able to work that with the setbacks.
Okay.
So, well, as we get through there and as we look at it, we can discuss that.
Okay.
All right, number six.
Six. J4D. Height cannot exceed 45 feet above average elevation of the footprint prior to construction without fill. A cupola or clock tower up to 15 feet is permitted above roofline if it adds significant merit. We have established in previous, previous hearings that the mean grade of the site is 29.83 feet. The proposed building height is 74.5, or building elevation, it should say, really, is 74.5 feet for a building height of 44.67 feet. The proposed tower at the corner of Elliott Street and Central Ave rises above the three-story element and rises, I think, to a peak, a roof peak of 79 feet for an excess of 4.17 feet above the 45-foot height limit. We feel this tower adds significant merit while staying well under the 15-feet, limit of 15 feet above the 45-foot height limit. We, we talked a little bit before about the cupola, the definition of cupola and clock tower and tower that we have, and I think we'd like to see if we could make this work if, we had some discussion yesterday, and if it were to be a clock tower, we, we could probably do that, if you'd like a clock tower, and that wouldn't be a bad solution. We even talked about a vertical sundial, a version of a clock tower on that wall. So, the other, the second point there is the elevator shaft penthouse extends five feet above the roof surface, and then there's, as you know, some screening, screen fencing, which we talk about at a later question here, and that's, we've reduced that to four feet high, it was five feet. In fact, that's the next one, next point.
Yeah, that's number seven. Any discussion on the height? Yes.
The tower is currently not a clock tower, it's simply an adjunct of the residential space, and the zoning simply says a cupola or a clock tower. You make a clock tower, we'll take a look at it, but the idea was that this would be not a extension of the living space, but a, a real functional tower, functional for use as a clock or for use as a cupola.
What about the vertical sundial?
A cupola would be open, typically, an open structure, like a bell tower.
I don't consider this to be a clock tower.
No.
And, you know, you can come in with a design of something that you, you think is a clock tower, and I'd consider it, but the idea was that this would be a decorative tower.
Okay, well, we certainly are amenable to making it a clock tower then, and not a, a part of the residential space as it is, and we'll go ahead and do that.
We can, we can discuss the concept sketches.
Right.
Before you do the, the final ones.
Right.
That would make it easier.
Right.
We're looking forward to elevations of the roof, because these protrusions that you talked about, we haven't, we don't know where they are, what they're going to look like.
Okay.
If you want to throw in a concept sketch of the vertical sundial.
Yeah.
We have designed sundial clock towers.
Great. It'd be interesting to see that.
That's how we had.
Yeah. Amazingly, they really work well, don't they?
I, I saw a garden statuary overseas that had multiple sundials attached to it, it was very striking.
Really, yeah.
So it'd be interesting to see what you.
There's some sculptural ones that are being built now, too, that are pretty interesting.
Eddie, and then.
Perhaps with a, with a weather vane on top would be, would be very attractive. Substantial sized weather vane.
Mm-hmm, right.
Pete, did I see your hand, or?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, we've, we've covered seven as well, as, you know, we'd like to see what that looks like.
Right.
And for, for the drawings, just so you know, for the drawings that we'll probably be discussing now and later on, I brought some examples with me of drawings that we requested from other developers, because it struck me as we were talking about different things that, you know, we might be talking about using the same terminology for different items, but also people at home would say, well, what the heck is amassing drawings? So I brought those in.
Okay.
And we can discuss them at the end of the things that we'd like to see, so that we've been talking about. All right, eight.
Eight. J4E. Third and fourth stories shall setback from the second story to maintain a scale appropriate to the nearby residential areas. Setback shall meaningfully reduce the appearance of bulk of the building above the second floor. The planning board may grant an exception if it finds a building is setback from a lot so that it is meaningfully, so as to meaningfully reduce the appearance of the bulk of the building. The, okay, response, the design currently proposed is consistent with the drawings shown at town meeting, Milton Hill Committee, Revitalization Committee. So we have basically tracked with the same design, we, as we talked about in the beginning, we have changed it, it's not identical over time, but it's pretty consistent. The proposed building has a three-story element along Central Ave and near Elliott Street frontage. The reason we did that essentially is to create the, the biggest mass against the track and against Central Ave or near Central Avenue in order to open up the Elliott Street frontage, I think of as park frontage, and also the back for setbacks and parking, surface parking. This is to reduce the massing on Elliott Street and is a better blend with the residential neighborhood. The four-story massing is along the north end of Central Ave and along the MBTA track side. In addition, each condominium unit gets a four-feet projected bay, which contrasts in surface wall finish and adds a setback rhythm to the facade. We believe these four-foot by 15-foot projected bays meaningfully reduce the appearance of bulk and add aesthetic interest and quality to the design. So this is a point that I'm sure we'll get into more detail about, but essentially, my thinking is that as opposed to a, a real step back to, to the building of, you know, several feet, we're, we're looking at it as surface, surface treatments and shadow lines, the bays, the band courses, and the cornice building. So, we're, I guess, looking for some discretion as to whether these devices that we're using, the combination of materials, the bays, and the break-in, in plane of the building in the cornice, and, and the band and the trim, window trim, et cetera, we can get into that, fits the bill for you. I believe, obviously, I believe it does, but we'd like to have that discussion. Yeah.
Any comments?
They have that up here, too.
Alex?
I don't feel that the proposed building, I think the proposed building is, overpowers the streetscape. I think it certainly overpowers the side along the tracks. I think it has a very massive appearance along the tracks, and that is. I think it has a very massive appearance along the tracks, and that is, uh, the view that you would get as you approach the building, coming, coming in from Boston, uh, as many people do. I don't think it's an attractive, uh, uh, view. I think that, uh, the building, uh, needs to be, uh, the, the upper floors should be stepped back in accord, along both Central Avenue and the tracks. And, um, I think that, uh, Mr. Jackson suggested that amassing studies were necessary, and, uh, all we have is your verbal description saying that you think that this is not a very big building, and, uh, it doesn't, you think that your treatments have, uh, complied with the zoning. I think the zoning requires significantly more than you've done, more than simply saying, disregard the zoning, this is not a massive building. I think it is a massive building, especially along Central Avenue and along the tracks, and, uh, I don't, uh, see that you qualify for an exception.
Since Alex mentioned amassing study, and Pete's brought it up before, seventeen Canton Avenue, which appeared in front of us recently, did a amassing study, and I'll need it back, um,
Okay.
Because it's my only copy, but I just want to pass that down, so you can see what we mean by that. I believe that's just a quick sketch-up.
Okay.
But it gives us an idea of the building's mass on the site. And again, it's something that we received from other developers, so it's, it's something that we're comfortable looking at and understanding.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else wish to
That's good.
Comment on the setbacks?
I guess I have to agree with Alex about the mass of the building. I think it's just too massive up along Central Avenue, and, and I'm a little less concerned about the tracks, but not totally less concerned, because particularly at the corner there, I think it's really important, so I think we do have to look at that. Just a note on the amassing studies, when we were studying, uh, Two Adams Street, I think the developer came in with like eighteen different
I brought a few of them, actually.
Eighteen different options of
Oh.
Where the building sits on the site, and, and, you know, um, where the mass is and setbacks, and
So, they give us options of
I think, you know, we really need some significant site planning, uh, for the site, and that includes the mass, how the mass works.
Eddie, who would have gone?
Yeah.
Passing this down. So, the first set I'm passing down are the options
Okay.
That Two Adams Street gave us, and the second set is a couple of site locations and spectrometry to, um, show how the building looked on the site and the buildings around it. And then the last one is from thirty-sixth Central Avenue, and how they place the building in contact with the other buildings, so we could get a sense of the scale and the mass of the proposed building with what existed there. So, again, we've been asking for this, but we haven't actually explained what we wanted from you, so this is a way of showing you what we've received from other developers for recent developments.
Mm-hmm.
So, Bill, did you, did I see your hand up?
They use photo simulation.
Photo simulation, okay.
That the other, what you mentioned is a brand of image, but, no, photo simulation.
Photo simulation.
I actually have all of the Two Adams on one two-by-three sheet with all of the different views.
Would you be able, do we have those in electronic format, that you could provide them? I hate showing them and then taking the drawings away, but they're my only copies.
I don't, I don't know, I'll have to look.
Okay, or maybe you could set up a meeting to come in and check the files.
Yeah, it's a photo montage.
Yeah.
We have a few of them.
Okay.
Would you, would you seen?
Those amassing diagrams that they drew, like eighteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Four, Two Adams, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Taken from ADA Wolf, taken from Elliott Street, taken from Adams up and down.
Mm-hmm. We've seen your elevations, but what we haven't seen is how they look from the different approaches with the other buildings in the area, um, that I recall, so that would be helpful. And again, the amassing studies that Pete's been requesting.
Okay.
I believe that what we wanted to do at the time was have a more significant setback than the one that you're proposing. Uh, but obviously, that would change your internal layout, and so, coming back to us with a proposal of, well, if we required a more significant setback, again, concept sketches, we're not expecting full construction documents at this point, would be extremely helpful.
Okay.
Um, because that would certainly be a change to what you've proposed, as far as how the residential units would stack up.
Okay.
So, but you've got at least two members of the board that feel
Yeah.
That the setbacks are not significant enough.
Yeah.
So
I have, I, uh, we could talk about this, you know, later, but I have, um, some sketches of the trackside
Okay.
That amend, uh, the design, I'll just show it to you, in order to, uh, bring the brick down and create a, uh, a wood-looking wall at that point below, so, uh, you'd have to compare it to the existing, but
Okay.
To see what that is. But I won't get waylaid in that now.
We'll look forward to looking at them later.
Yeah. So, nine?
Nine.
Seven, um, I mean, J five B. Building should not rise in an interrupted vertical plane more than twenty-five feet. The planning board may grant an exception if it finds greater rise is architecturally appropriate and does not cause an unacceptable appearance of bulk. And, and I just say, we have, uh, as stated, nine above, the use of jogs, uh, in the building, amassing steps in the story height, and the eleven, uh, projecting bays are, uh, elements that we're using to break up the, the bulk and the amassing of it. And, uh, I think we're gonna have to, uh, discuss this issue. Obviously, it's related, nine and, and eight are essentially the same issues, it seems.
Absolutely, and I note that you've, uh, put in your comment that there's a variety of siding finishes, colors, and window treatments.
Right.
And of course, one of the things that just happened with thirty-sixth Central Avenue is that we've reduced the number of, um, siding treatments on there, so that may be something that we'll want to discuss. Uh, certainly, Central Avenue bef, uh, as we moved into granting the special permit, gave us a full list of materials, uh, which we've amended downwards at this point, so, um, as I recall, the board was very much in favor of a simpler treatment. Um, any other comments on this particular section?
Well, I, I, I mean, the zoning means something, and, uh, once again, I think that the, especially the side along the tracks, uh, this really, um, flies in the fa, that treatment flies in the face of this zoning requirement, and to say that, uh, you've done something that reduces the impression of bulk in that area is, I don't, I don't, I can't agree with that.
Okay. Can I ask, uh, one question on, um, the, the only other comparison we have is thirty-sixth Central? Does that have a, uh, a change in plane that's twenty-five feet or less?
Do you have the plan with you?
No, I don't.
Well, I don't either.
We could certainly
I did just look at it today, though.
Yeah.
And, uh, does that, okay, does it have to happen on, on all the surfaces, or just on the front?
All the surfaces have to be equally distinguished, according to the zoning. In other words, we don't have a back of the building, you put little teeny windows, because you've, uh,
Right.
Done everything on the front. Every single side has to be of equal, of equal
Okay.
Quality.
I just want to clarify, I'm, I'm not sure that, I, I don't believe that that project meets the twenty-five foot, um, uninterrupted vertical plane, that restriction specifically.
We can certainly have a look at it again.
Maybe it does.
It does.
Okay. More discussion on nine, or should we move to ten?
Just, uh, a note that, of course, this building is unusual, and that it's being approached, uh, by three different directions.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, all four sides are, are very, very visible, and naturally, we want to make sure that they're as attractive and welcoming as possible.
Right.
So, both for the sake of the town, and of course, for the sake of your own building's value.
Sure.
So, um, it's a key issue for us.
Right, right, and as you can see, we're trying to make the all sides, um, because really, functionally, they're, uh, the residential part of them is all the same uses, so they really have the same expression, and there isn't, in that sense, as, as much of front, side, and back as there would be in some other buildings.
Absolutely, and, uh, I'm pleased to see that you've been doing some concept drawings, so when we get to that point, look forward to seeing them. Yes, ten would be
Okay.
Good next stop.
Ten. J five C. No unreleaved, flat surfaces, windows, doors should project to be recessed, should project or be recessed from, um, from the facade. Uh, and this gets at the, uh, treatment of the trim and the, the siding. I, I brought along, actually, some, um, some samples, material samples
Great, excellent.
To show, uh, the actual, uh, thickness of the casing and the siding that we're using. Uh, the surface of the exterior walls feature window and, uh, door casings, belt courses, paneled bays, and fourth floor panel siding and brick. The brick is used at the ground floor as, uh, the basement level, and the first floor parking garage at the first floor. The window and door casings are five-quarter by four-and-a-half inch wide, and serve to project from the adjacent siding and create a shadow line to relieve the flat surface by adding a scale, uh, adding scale to a projecting detail. So
Any questions?
How far out from the surface of the plane do the window and door casings project?
Let me show you. These, uh, this is, uh, the two kinds of siding that we have proposed. I should have it mounted up on a single board, but, um, this is the, uh, these are both lap siding, obviously, with eight-inch exposure and four-inch exposure, and if I line the, what would be the sheathing plane, it's right about like that. So, it's about, uh, roughly a half an inch in front of the siding. Obviously, it varies because of the, uh, the angle of the siding, but it's a, it's a, it's a pretty good, um, dimension that goes from about, uh, half inch to three-quarters of an inch. I think the siding is a quarter inch thick. See it on the side? And it thickens as it laps.
And where there is brick?
Uh, on the, on the trim.
Yeah. Well, how big a projection is there where is brick?
There isn't casings, um, there isn't casings of this type. The, the brick openings are recessed. There's no casings on the brick.
So, there's no trim? Uh, Central Avenue has
Right.
The trim around the windows on the
Yes.
The stone lintels.
Right.
There, do you have that for you?
It's, uh, you know, typical masonry, it's the doors and windows storefronts are recessed in the face of the brick, about three inches.
Okay, well, that certainly qualifies.
Yeah.
That works. So, we're all set on this one?
Well, we've, we've
Any other questions?
We've got to determine whether or not half an inch is enough, but I'll look around.
Okay. Eleven.
Okay. J five C. Architecture must be compatible with and complementary to its surroundings. The design is compatible with emerging redevelopment of Central Avenue dis, the Central Avenue District. The surroundings are a combination of commercial and small business use and transportation-oriented residential development. The PUD district, established in the current zoning, determined that the three sites proposed on the lots greater than twenty thousand square feet be multi-storied and mixed-use buildings, which would be appropriate uses on the three sites in the Central Avenue biz, uh, Business District. The bulk of the amassing is predominantly clavered siding to create a finished scale and detail, uh, with the building trim and the pergola and the site work. This is a little bit run on English, but, for the ground floor business area and the surrounding site, brick is the siding material to tie into the historic masonry, and particularly brick of the district. The fourth floor with cornice and projecting bay, uh, would be paneled siding relating to the historic treatment such as slate and paneling. The intent of the architecture and site work design is one of quiet integration with the neighborhood while anchoring a small commercial and transportation center.
Any questions or comments?
I was hoping, and I still actually hope, but time's getting pretty late, that we would get some architects to give us, uh, give us a view on this particular, um, requirement. I'm, you know, I hear what you say, I'm not sure that, uh, to me, this, uh, this is particularly sensitively designed, but, uh, I'm willing to, uh, be convinced, and I hear what you say.
Okay.
Okay. Pete, you look like just a S I P. Did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I, I think, I think this is probably the one that, um, is most discordant to me. I don't think that the architecture is at all compatible with the surroundings. I think it's tremendously out of scale, um, and just overwhelms the whole commercial area, um, way out of scale, and that, that's, you know, what I've been saying last time. I, I went back to the, uh, ULI report and just kind of reminded myself of some of the things they said, and, and a lot of this, again, relates to what I keep pushing on. As far as I'm concerned, there hasn't been any site planning yet, and what we're doing here is site plan review and special permit, and I haven't seen any evidence of any site planning yet on this project. But, in rev, and, um, when ULI, um, did their report, and they reviewed the earlier drawings, um, the McGrath design for this, um, which earlier was suggested as, you know, one of the things that this follows and the reason we should accept this, is this what, what ULI said. Well, ULI's comment on the McGrath design was, "The height of the building facing the intersection appears tall and somewhat overbearing. We recommend that this facade should be two stories high at the street line and remaining floors out back. This would provide a more suitable pedestrian scale at the sidewalk." I mean, I, that's really my point. This, this building, the amassing as designed, is totally inappropriate, incompatible with this district, with the town of Milton, um, and that's, that's, continues to be my, um, my concern and my issue with this building.
That does go back to the idea of setbacks, is if you have your on, on-street area at two stories, and then you may be able to push the third and the fourth back sufficiently. Again, it's going to change the interior layout of the building, but that will address the issues that board members have that are concerned with that height, uh, being too high on the street level. I also went back to the ULI report
Yeah.
For the same reason, to see that. So, we also may consider, um, getting the revitalization committee in, or at least John Ziegler's, to have a chat with him about some of the things that they discussed, so. And again, I appreciate that you've taken it, as you stated in the beginning, to all of these bodies, but, you know, they were looking at the concept designs, and we have to match it to the zoning. It's our responsibility, so that is, uh, an issue.
Okay.
The setbacks and the, uh, coherency and cohesiveness of the architecture.
Okay.
Thirteen.
J five E, number twelve. Architecture is to be coherent in all its elements. The elements of the design are composed to address several issues, combining business and residential use, providing adequate parking with predominantly garage parking, anchoring the corner of Central and Elliott for a pedestrian neighborhood, retail, and MB, MBTA travel. Uh, creating public landscape and amenity, create a green pastoral front yard to the building with landscaping. The building has a number of siding materials designed to be coherent internally and externally with the neighboring buildings and uses. Uh, this is really repeating, uh, what I said last time.
Mm-hmm.
Adding to that, uh, is the last point, uh, where we talk about the mansard cap. We discussed last time a little bit about the definition of mansard, and technically, uh, it is a, a double-pitched roof, a virtually flat roof at the top and a, a sloped, steep roof at, at the base, uh, as you said, you were correct. Uh, this really is more of a, what we've designed, a fig, more of, I would call, a figurative, rather than a literal mansard. Uh, we discussed this a little bit yesterday, um, with Steve and I, and, uh, his feeling was that if you really would like a mansard, a literal mansard And, uh, his feeling was that if you really would like a mansard, a literal mansard, and actually mansards these days don't really have pitched roofs at the top. They're not literally the historical definition of a mansard, but they're sloped, steep slopes, uh, with, and it turns out to be, uh, dormers then to create the, the plane of the window. It has to project a little bit. Uh, we'd be willing to do that, happy to do that. Am I stating that correctly? Okay.
Good, excellent. Any, any questions on this section? Did, we did a mansard for two items, didn't we?
I don't know, I think-
Thirty-six Central.
Did we have thirty-six as well? Yes, Alex.
Uh, I think that, uh, the multitude of different materials, it's, it's nice to use as few types of materials, um, as possible. In other words, where you've got bricks, stone, hardy board, whatever. I think it becomes confusing and I don't think that it, it, it helps pull things together. I, I think that whether or not, uh, we would want a mansard would depend a little bit on, uh, resolution of some of the other issues. In other words, saying, "Put a mansard on and we'll be happy" is not a-
Right.
Is not my, I don't think that's the right way of doing it.
And it may depend on how we've dealt with the setback issues on the other floors as well.
Yeah. I mean, from my standpoint, I prefer it the way it's designed to a, a roofed mansard, a literal mansard, but, uh, that's okay.
Eddie? Pete? Any discussion on this? All right. Thirteen.
Okay, thirteen. Uh, J F, J five F. Windows and doors are to be surrounded by appropriate architectural element setting them off from the plane of the facade. I think essentially we answered that, uh, in a previous one. Uh, see item ten above. Uh, ban courses, uh, window and door casings. And then I have a note. Openings will be brick masonry at the ground floor level with decorative diamond motif, uh, steel grills. We looked a little bit at the, uh, design of the grill work in the parking garage and, and agree with you. It doesn't, it needs to be upgraded a little over the prison motif that it had. So we have a, a sketch idea of what, what that might be.
Great. And so those, uh, openings with the, the steel grills are only on the side of the, um, tracks, correct?
No, they're on Elliott Street two on the, at the first floor level.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, you can look at elevations, uh, which would actually be the original elevations. Essentially, it's the same building.
Okay. Any questions?
Okay.
Well, I, I, I do think that, uh, we're going to need specification of the type of windows and doors you're going to use and they, uh, you know, they're, we'll consider their size with the amount of, uh-
Yeah.
Of, uh, surrounding work that you, you do. Uh, but we, we, we do want to know actually in detail, uh, what you're proposing.
Yeah, I-
As far as windows and doors.
I believe that, that is in our, our binder. It simulated, uh, lights and, and sliding windows. But I'll, I'll get that out for you. Yeah.
And actually that leads straight on into fourteen, the discussion of the types of windows and doors.
Okay. Windows are three basic types, the condominium units, uh, the projected bays and the storefronts. The basic condominium windows are sliding double units, five feet six wide by five feet high. The projected bays have the same five, six by five foot sliding double units. Uh, and then additionally, they have tempered glass, low awning, uh, fixed awning type units in front of the bay windows, uh, with a painted balustrade, iron balustrade, which would, uh, give some more detail to it and would also, uh, act as, as a screening, uh, from the street looking in. Because those, uh, the bays virtually have glass from floor to ceiling. The storefront is a series eight foot high storefront windows and doors. All the exterior doors in the design are three feet by eight feet. Uh, all the sliding windows open and ob- obviously fifty percent of them open. The lower awning, awning types are all fixed and do not open. The storefront is fixed and not operable.
Any questions? Eddie? Alex?
I think that if you look at the Walter Baker buildings, you'll see that these windows, unreleaved by muttons, which are the things that go, hold the smaller panes in place. These are basically, this is a real step in a direction that has never been used in the area, which is the, uh, big plate glass windows with no muttons. And I don't think it's, it works. So, uh, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm dissatisfied with the window treatment.
Any other comments?
Can I ask, uh, all, all window types are, are just storefront or?
Well, I mean, as you go up here, it seems to me, I, I, I mean, if you've got a balcony and you, you know, you want the, the doors to slide, you've, you've got an issue. But it, it just unreleaved plate glass windows, I think is going to be a, uh, is, is, doesn't fit into the area, isn't appropriate to the area, isn't architecture which, uh, respects the, uh, where the building is being put. I, I think that the, some of the windows, in fact, most of the windows should be broken down into smaller lights, uh, smaller areas of glass, uh, set off with buttons. And, uh, that's my feeling.
I thi- I think my, uh, my client would probably agree with you. And, uh, I've, I've sort of been trying to give it a little more, um, contemporary flavor, maybe a little less historical, but we certainly could put muttons in, uh, all the, all the windows.
I think that, uh, a little more historical would not be a bad thing.
Although I suspect the commercial windows should be consistent with the other commercial windows in the area as you've been consistent with the brick material-
Mm-hmm.
-for the other commercial, keeping the windows, um, in the same type would make a lot more sense.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Anyone else on windows? No? All right.
I'm sorry. Yeah. 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 No. Okay, we're just debating different styles of units-
That's fine.
-of window units, yeah. Okay, uh, we're on fifteen.
Fifteen, yes.
J five H. Backs and, back and sides of the buildings must be given the same architectural care as the front. And the buildings on all sides must present an attractive appearance. The use of the building is the same on all sides and the design of facades are, are identical in their detail and finishes on all elevations. The north elevation adjacent to the MBTA tracks mixes brick and clavert siding, projected bays and fourth floor, uh, cap, which is, is the mansard, I'm calling the cap. The floor, the ground floor and the first floor have openings with decorative, uh, diamond grills for light and ventilation. The slope of the grade from twenty-three feet to thirty-four feet foot elevation along the wall will be retained by the existing retaining wall along the tracks. The building is partially eight foot setback, uh, from the property line, which is essentially that retaining wall, and partially sixteen foot setback, just for a, a reference of that. And that's, uh, more setback than exists now. I think it's about four feet now, three feet, um, along the, the whole length of it. So we, we've tried to give it a little breathing room from that elevation too. Uh, and again, I, I have these, uh, new sketches we can get into of, of the track side-
Okay.
-and some ideas on that.
And again, I think just reiterating our point that this is very important to have this track side be treated with as much care as the rest of the building.
Right. Right. Uh, we agree with that. I mean, they're, uh, again, they're, they're units, uh, and, and have to have all the amenities and look of the units.
Absolutely. And sixteen.
Okay, sixteen.
I have a comment.
You want to come in on that? Sorry, Alex, go ahead.
I, I really have a problem with this, the parking levels on, along the tracks. I think it is prison-like. I understand you've got something else. Uh, it does seem to me that you should use elements like arches. Really have to do something to disguise those, uh, those, uh, what I regard as hideous, uh, hideous, uh, openings that you use to let air into the cars. It may be that, uh, you should seal some of them up and put phony applique architectural elements along the side.
Oh, no, I totally would not agree with that.
Well, I, I, okay, I, I'm, I'm suggesting that you, uh-
You mean something other than phony, I think, right?
Something, something needs to be done here. I don't, I, I'm very concerned about this, uh, those particular levels. I mean, your, even your projected bays and your tower are all lifted above this parking level. And, and the parking level is the level that people are going to see at ground level.
Yeah, maybe I should just pass this around because that's the one, uh, element that we, not the one, but one that we drew, uh, that, that tries to address that. We could just, um...
Bill? Here is ten.
I do have a question on the back of the building. Do you have, um, are you planning to do anything special on the back of the building because of the sound coming from the tracks?
Yeah, yeah, and that's in a, another question here about the ki- kind of insulation that'll have-
Coming, not just the insulation, but on the windows and the-
Yeah.
-any other treatment there. All right.
Yeah, windows and, and, uh, and insulation. So this, this sketch is of part of the track side, the, the lower part, uh, to the point of where it jogs. And just for the exact reason that you stated, to reduce the height of the, um, of the brick wall and the look of the number of openings in there, vent openings in the garage, we're looking at, at building that wall as a continuation of the floors above. It would still be a parking garage, uh, and it'll be, uh, so functionally, you know, it appears somewhat in this scheme to be, uh, part of the residential, but it would be, the bays would continue down those two bays that didn't previously. And I think it's, uh, we, we feel it's a lot better look, uh, to, um, reduce the height of the, of the brick and, uh, kind of, you know, odious, um, industrial feeling.
Alex, uh, has, definitely has a point on these, the way they look as though they're floating above the brick, um, rather than being tied down into the ground.
They, they are cantilevered.
Yeah, they are cantilevered.
Four, four feet, yeah.
Trying to decide how I feel about that. So I may have to think on this one.
Well, they could have brackets too to sort of express that.
Yeah.
Uh, which would be another historical-
Or other phony architectural elements.
Yeah, or some other phony baloney stuff.
I was thinking maybe they could just tie into the ground and, uh, not be phony architectural elements. But I have to say that it is better having the siding there than the brick. I think that addresses at least one of the questions. What do you guys think? Or do you want to ruminate on it?
Let's, uh, I, I think that, uh, I see no reason why we have two different kinds of siding.
We'll talk about the colors later.
Okay.
No, I, I, I agree. I think the colors, um, there are too many colors.
Well, I, I, I think that you, you see the, the, you remember the issue about the, uh, uh, business use-
Yes.
-at this corner.
Yes.
Obviously, that fits into what I think.
Yes.
So, uh, but I, I will say this, I think that this is better.
Yeah.
Whether or not it's good is, uh, not there yet.
Progress.
Okay. Yeah, I, I brought along the, uh, the before too, if you want to just look at that to compare it, but this is the after of, of this idea.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sixteen.
So sixteen. Roofline to be visually coherent and architecturally well-defined. Mansards, cornices, and architectural elements are encouraged. The, the roofline is part of the building cap, is, as part of the building cap is comprised of the paneled walls with four inch projected gravel stop. At the base of the paneled wall is a two-foot projecting cornice, uh, supporting, supported below by curved brackets. This is more a figurative mansard than a literal mansard roof. This is what I was saying before. The building is not trying to mimic specific architectural elements, but to design all the elements in ways that paraphrase the historical styles and rhythms, which give it, while giving it a fresh distinctive look that sits harmoniously with its historic neighbors into the larger town. So that was what I was thinking and I'm amenable to making it more historical, uh, which I, I think is a general comment I'm hearing.
Although I think, uh, one of the other things we discussed is in fact we'll need to solve some of the other questions-
Yeah.
-before finalizing the roof.
Yeah.
But, um, it's good to hear that we'll work together on, uh, possibilities. Any other questions on the roofline?
Well, yeah, I, I, I mean, you remember the last time through, I looked at this and I said, "This is a four-story flat roof building." And I didn't, I didn't get the figurative mansard. So I, uh, I do think that, uh, revisiting the roofline, whatever happens, is necessary because this roofline I don't, I don't cotton to very-
You would like a stronger expression of the inside roof.
I, I think the zoning says, "Let's, uh, let's beef up this-"
Fair enough.
"-situation up there."
So we'll continue to talk about that one.
Okay. Seventeen. High-quality materials are required. Traditional materials are favored. Uh, the exterior material in the building, materials it should say, are historic common brick on the ground floor and parts of the first floor. Above are cement fiber board, which are hardy plank, hardy is the, obviously the trade name, with a similar hardy trim, uh, which is a cement fiber board. The projecting bays in the fourth floor are hardy plank and panel siding and trim casing. The cement fiber siding and trim give a historical look while providing low, very low maintenance and little repainting. The site work is common brick hardscape sidewalks, uh, courtyard. Along the length of Elliott Street are cast iron posts and railing at the retaining walls and the same post and railing fence at the property line. Historic gooseneck railroad pole lights, that's what I'm calling them, the type of lights that are there, are used for the site lighting.
Okay. Any questions on the materials?
I, I, you have, I, I don't have a question, but I, I think that-
We're calm.
-before we get into specifications of materials, I think that you, what you have, we would consider high-quality materials. Whether or not they're appropriate high-quality materials is not what we're discussing. You understand that we want, uh, high-quality materials and these would qualify.
Okay. So the materials are in the, the design and use of them is another question?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
And again, as we go further into details, we'll discuss colors and, and specific styles of, for example, iron posts and railings. Question on the lighting, uh, obviously we'll get into more specifics later, but you'll be required to make sure that it doesn't spill over into adjacent properties.
Right.
Talk about times when it can be on and off for public use and safety, so. Any other questions or comments? Not eighteen?
Okay. Ground floor business to be functional and present an attractive and inviting appearance with convenient access. The ground floor has access from the courtyard, the tower, the base of the tower, at the corner and along Central Avenue. Each of these three areas has business, has a business entrance. And depending on the layout configuration of the businesses, separate outdoor entrances or combined entrances at the tower corner will be used. There's a four-foot-high, uh, sign band running continuously above the storefront for a hundred forty-four linear feet. This will hold signage consistent with the Milton sign ordinances. Additionally, decal signs can be used on the storefronts for an attractive look, coherent- Additionally, decal signs can be used on the storefronts for an attractive look, coherent and coherent look. I'm just sort of pointing out that the commercial part of it, I think, can have a lot of touches that get into sign ordinances and lighting and color and those kind of things too.
Any comments or questions on this?
We probably should make a recommendation on what sort of signs we think are appropriate for this, rather than just leave them for the sign committee because signs, of course, on a building like this are going to be significant and will affect the design.
Obviously, keeping in mind that the Sign Review Committee and the Board of Selton have final say over.
I understand that, but it does seem to me that we need to make an initial pass at this to make sure that, because it is a part of the design, any way you, any way you slice it.
Of course, go right ahead. Yes, go right.
Just a suggestion, why don't they go have an audience with the Sign Review Committee and get some ideas from them?
Certainly, I think that's not a bad idea at all. Although Alex's point that if they're putting the layout directly into the structure of the building, we should consider, you know, we should at least consider how that's going to do, but meeting with the Sign Review Committee and having their say on that would be very helpful for you, I think. That way, there's no surprises.
Right.
So, and we can put in anything into the special permit that they might require, so. Bill?
There is a sign, sign design.
You can't say it without rhyming, you know that.
Right, I'm gonna trip over it. There is, there is a guideline book that is available. But one that's on our website too, well, make sure that you get it electronically.
Yeah, that would be helpful for you as well.
The only comment I would have, and I don't really know, so you guys know better and you'll find out in the Sign Review Committee. It seems to me that the sign band is overscaled at four feet. But I don't know. You guys know more about that than I do, so I would think that that might end up smaller. But again, the Sign Review Committee and looking at it, it just seems four feet is a pretty massive sign for this commercial area. I know the band on, at Thirty-Six Central is an eighteen-inch wide sign band.
Yeah, I don't remember what it is in East Milton where they've started putting the sign bands in.
Right, and I don't know. You know that stuff better than I do. I just think it's a little over scaled.
Kind of proportionate to the facade.
Right.
I know there is no four-foot band in East Milton.
I didn't think it was four feet, but I haven't stood there and measured the scale, you know, in a long time.
What you can do is you can put a molding around it to reduce the...
Or we can work something out.
Yeah, I mean, it may, I think it wants to be probably at least three feet because I think otherwise it becomes out of scale and a little too restrictive.
And we don't want that.
Yeah.
One thing you might consider, especially as we'll be talking about colors probably a little bit later on, and this again would help you with your own marketing, is what sort of visual identity you want for the building, such that your brick, your siding, the awnings, the sign band, all have a consistent color. And the same thing for the signs there, so that when you see your building, it's very clear what building that is. And so, you know, I don't know if you're working with the marketing team yet, but you may actually consider how those will all work together.
Yeah.
So, and that would make it, and again, have a look at the other, you know, the last thing you want is chartreuse on one corner and neon pink on another, you know, you see what I mean? You don't want clashing colors in what is actually quite a small district, so be consistent with the, with your neighbors on that.
And we're looking at a, a building sign at the corner too, as Henry's Building. So that is a key element, I think.
The access, of course, is important and
Yeah.
the access into the courtyard and the flow, and also the access into the tower and what happens then because I gather that people are gonna have to go upstairs. And so, we're going to, the convenient access is something we're gonna look at.
And that brings up another thing that we've sort of collectively had questions on in the past, is the part of the commercial area that's sunk below grade. And how do you make that attractive and welcoming to people so they won't be afraid to go in there and go into the shops? It sounds like a small idea, but sometimes people just can't be bothered taking that extra step if it looks, you know, they'll just walk right on by. So making sure that that's welcoming and easy for everyone to access is key. Nineteen?
Okay. Interior spaces to be designed to be noise-resistant from above, below, and from all sides. Each unit, both residential or business, will be separated with a full-floor and double-wall airspace with six inches of fiberglass insulation on each side. So there'll be a, an airspace between two separate walls on, on all these demising walls. This is an excellent sound reduction rating, STC, Sound Transmission Coefficient of fifty-eight, which is a numerical rating of how much sound can get through. The floors will be ten inches of fiberglass insulation and resilient floor homicote underlayment for structure-borne sound. The north elevation along the tracks will have six-inch open cell foam, which seals better than fiberglass and provides excellent thermal and sound transmission barrier from the tracks. All other outside walls will have R-19 fiberglass insulation. The, the soundproofing on outside walls and windows is essentially the same as, you probably know, as thermal insulation with slightly, you know, different frequency issues. And on a, on the track side, you have a rumble, a low rumble, or even structure-borne sound, you know, movement. And so, that, I think, needs a little bit more attention, which is why we're doing the foam insulation there.
Any questions on this?
I'm confident that will take care of it.
I think maybe triple-glazed windows on the track side might be more...
They could be, they could be. With the double-glazed these days and the extent that they're sealed, it's the air transmission that's a huge element too for them, but we could do triple.
Anything else? Just a couple of things. I know this part's probably not necessarily considered to be in the zoning, but I remember people who have lived in multi-use buildings like this have brought up issues of noise from things like trash chutes, you know, people who have their elevators. And the other issue is, we've of course requested that the retail area or the commercial area be suitable for either retail and possibly restaurant use. So considering what sort of insulation would be required around there, I know somebody who lived several stories above a restaurant and could hear the music every night because unfortunately the water pipes also went all the way up and through theirs and they got the vibration from that. So, yeah. So I just mentioned that as, considering for the insulation as well.
Okay. It must have been an older building, I would think, but...
I think it had been converted from something else.
Yeah.
And they put the restaurant in and didn't consider everything else they might need to do. Yes, exactly.
Wow. Okay, any other points?
Anything else? Alright, if not, twenty. And then after, as you said, the, sorry.
Can I make one point? It does seem to me that we're going to want a description of the construction techniques that you're going to be using to insert all this stuff in.
Right.
Just because we want to get a good feeling as to what you're going to be doing.
Do wall assemblies that show you all the parts of them and the ratings.
So, and just before you hit twenty, twenty-five, of course, we already talked about the fact that that's the final element. So after we finish twenty-four and we've made sure that you have all you need from us, then we'll be inviting comments from the public who have been extremely patient. Alright, so twenty, four more to go.
Okay, twenty. Landscaping shall enhance the design of the building and provide attractive features which help integrate the business district with the residential districts. The landscape design for the site involves a variety of areas and elements. Central Avenue sidewalk, the retaining wall, and the courtyard along Elliot Street are brick pavers and common brick to blend with the ground floor walls as well as those in the business district. The cast iron rails and fences, historic pole lights. That's not a sentence. I think it...
Like that was an ad, what did it all?
And wood pergola will add contextual, a contextual complement to the district. The planting and lawn are of local specimens and add a variety of heritage oms, flowering fruit trees, birch, and honey locusts. Many shrubs including rhododendra, I think there's four types of rhododendra. Azaleas, boxwood, hollies, yews, and viburnum are located along the building. So it's a pretty, I feel, pretty elaborate site plan that has a variety of materials, a lot of them flowering. And we can get into specifically the design on that now or later.
And you know, you say here the north side of the site will be fenced off for security.
Yeah, the north side of the site will be fenced off for security and covered with gravel.
Will it be accessible for maintenance?
It'll be fenced, so it won't be accessible by the public.
Right, but it would be accessible by the condominium association.
It'll have a gate.
Any questions on this?
I, I don't think we should be discussing the landscaping plan right now. I think that we could spend an entire meeting doing it. I mentioned to you, I think the street trees are far too close to the street to give them any chance of survival and, but I think that we may be able to make more space for them. But I, it just seems to me that discussing the landscaping plan now is premature.
Right.
And if we're having some issues deciding on where we're going to site the building, it'd be... Yeah.
I mean, I'm fairly, you know, extremely confident in Bill Fleming. I've worked with him for many years. So he's very good.
Good.
So once we have a plan, he'll be able to work on landscape elements.
Right.
Okay. Twenty-one, appropriate lighting.
Twenty-one, appropriate lighting. We have a lighting plan on the Henry's Building called Lighting Plan for Henry's Building, of all things. In the landscape section of the binder, a combination of historic king luminaires to match the existing and fifteen-foot pole horizontal cutoff fixtures by Pappy Lighting are what's proposed. So that's, there's also light levels on that plan.
Right.
Although that'll have to be amended because the parking lot is slightly changed, although it's essentially the same. I think we have six fixtures in the parking lot for cutoff lights.
Again, I think we can probably further discuss the lighting plan when we discuss the landscaping plan. They would work out well together.
Right.
And, but we'll refer back to our binders for the specifics before then.
Okay.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two, we, I think, went over combining it with one in the past. We can redo that or just skip it? Okay, twenty-three. Business use parking, four spaces per thousand square feet of business use area. The business use area of the building is seven thousand eight sixty square feet. At one space per two fifty square feet, the required parking is thirty-one spaces. That's rounded down, it's about thirty-one point four, so rounded it down, we took that liberty. Thirty-one spaces are provided at the parking lot at the west end of the site, which satisfies the requirement.
That would change if you did in fact have a restaurant in there, so that would be the first point. But, you know, leave that for the moment, because I know you don't have tenants lined up.
Yeah.
And then the second part, of course, is you'll need to provide us, as we get closer to the special permit, with a parking sharing schedule and both Two Adams Street and Thirty-Six Central, we've had those from them, so you can use those as examples.
Okay.
So, any other comments on parking?
I think the business use parking is pretty remote from the businesses, being way down on the other end of the site. And I also think that a thirty-whatever lot parking, surface parking lot is not consistent with a residential district. So, you know, I don't like this proposal for surface parking. I'd like to see more of it in the building.
So you'd have to have more of the building, or the building cover more of the square footage of the lot in that case?
You know, we're talking about a lot of changes to the buildings in terms of setbacks and things like that. And so I think an objective in my mind would be to reduce the surface parking. Especially, I mean, it just, you know, a thirty-six car parking lot's a pretty big parking lot to have adjacent to residential district.
Yeah, thirty-one spaces.
Thirty-one spaces.
Anyone else, Alex?
It seems to me that the parking should be accessible from the outside of the building so that people who use the parking can actually get outside into the business area. And it's not just to, you know, in case a shopper were able to penetrate the parking area, but also the people who live there might, we want to encourage them to get out and use the business area. And it does seem to me it's a little fortress-like right now.
So you've got two conflicting views here to work with. You've got somebody who would like it all undercover as much as possible, somebody who wants less of it undercover.
No, 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 no. Doorways through the walls.
Oh, you want doorways through, okay.
No, 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 no.
So do you like Pete want more of it undercover but with more doorways? Or do you want, or do you not have that coverage requirement?
I think that if they wanted to put a deck on their surface parking, that would be fine with me.
Okay. Alright, so having a look at...
As long as on the deck there were trees and...
How about more billowing?
A top lot and...
We're going to leave this to you to think about.
Hanging garden.
I think the only other comment I'll make on parking, and I guess this is gonna be... When we were earlier talking, years ago with this, you know, working on the design leading up to going to public, the town meeting and all that kind of thing, there was the notion of replacing the fourteen parking spaces that are located on the town par side. And, you know, in fact, the plan that was presented to town meeting specifically included fourteen parking spaces as replacement for the parking that's being lost. There was a big concern with the merchants in the neighbor, neighborhood that when Thirty-Six Central got developed, you know, there were all these parking space, that surface parking lot that was available to the public was eliminated. And there was a lot of concern that there wasn't going to be enough commercial parking. So they asked, the merchants asked us, and the discussions leading up to the zoning was that the fourteen parking spaces, and I believe there was concurrence on this, on the part of the applicant, that those fourteen parking spaces would be replaced as part of this project, which would leave you fourteen spaces short, or thirteen spaces short or whatever.
Yeah, I, we've kind of kicked this around. I think my understanding of it is probably not as good as Steve's and we need to figure out a solution. Basically, we've put a lot of parking on the project.
The building is a smaller scale than what we represented at town meeting in oh-six and oh-seven. We don't have the underground parking out towards Elliot Street anymore. That's all permeable green space now. Peter already made the comment, he doesn't like the size of the parking lot already outside. And he's looking for more spaces. We don't have the room for more spaces. The fourteen spaces were not a condition of the sale of the lot. They're not a condition of the purchase sale, which we have under agreement for the lot. So, you know, we're providing as many spaces as we can on the site. The commercial lot is essentially public use. And we can certainly discuss a schedule that will accommodate that, maybe some overnight parking for fourteen spaces. But we could figure out a schedule.
The other thing as we look at the schedules, you're gonna have to figure out how to keep people who are riding the T from parking in the business lot all day. So that'll be something that we'll need to discuss. It may be more than just signage. But, you know, again, if we're doing a landscaping and lighting meeting, we may be doing a parking meeting or at least half a meeting on parking. So we just want to lay out the issues for you to think about. The other thing too, for Pete's point of wanting more of the parking undercover, is if you're pushing some of the building a setback, you know, pushing it away from the street, you may be able to push it over on top of that parking. That may help you as far as some of your internal layout and retaining some of those spaces. So we'll leave you to think about how to juggle those.
It would increase the building area though, to do that, which we're...
We'll talk about it.
We're at the limit on...
Exactly, no, understood, understood. You know, it does get tricky when you're thinking about stuff. And there may be things that we want to do that we can't, and there may be things that you want to do that you can't. And the challenge is to find the happy medium, so. Alex?
It seems to me that on the provision of spaces for use of the people in the business area with doors, letting people get outside and a good parking sharing schedule, I think that it's doable. But the people have to be able to get out of the buildings.
I think parking sharing, and the other thing that's been discussed over the years is the use of zip cars, because I know that, you know, zip car says that one of their cars can replace like ten parking spaces or something in terms of demand, so maybe if we were able to work out some space, I know, Steve, you've mentioned that you've got zip cars on other of your properties, and maybe if, you know, if we worked out spaces, there could be a couple of zip cars here or something, it might reduce some of the demands elsewhere, and maybe would help us, you know, do this, I was trying to think about.
All right, last one before we hear from the public, twenty-four.
Resident parking. The requirement is one space per bedroom, including dens, which the planning board thinks can be used as bedrooms. Sorry, the spaces in this text are a little crazy. The total bedroom count is fifty-eight bedrooms, twenty-seven two bedrooms, and four one bedrooms, plus in these one bedrooms really have two dens, which I hadn't thrown into the calculation before. So adding this up, we get a required sixty spaces with those two dens, and sixty-one is the number we have in the building. So we'll, we'll be talking about how to identify the use of those spaces, and the, you know, whether they'll be owned or, you know, there's ways of doing, creating visitor parking with different ratios, but basically, we're satisfying the zoning of creating one for each bedroom and den.
And we'll have to look at how we deed those and how we write that into the special permit, because that's been an issue before of ensuring that at least one unit, each unit has at least one deeded parking space, so, but we'll figure that out as we go along.
Yeah, one other issue about using garage parking for commercial use, for business use, if that is sort of being discussed, is that the, as we have it, there's a apartment garage door which would be controlled by the residents, so that would be something we need to figure out how to deal with, to, you know, let the public in and out of the garage, if that were the case.
There are two other issues, too. One is residents may feel more secure coming in late at night, knowing that only they have access to the garage.
Yeah.
And the other being for people driving by the commercial district, they can't see that there are open spaces in the garage.
Right.
And so parking that is visible from the street for commercial use...
Right, there's no vacancy sign.
Exactly, maybe more appropriate. So again, we can discuss this, and you can give us your opinion as you show us the plans. Do you, before we move to public, is there any other comments from members of the board regarding this? So, and do you, is there anything that you feel that you need from us after this discussion? Anything that you're not sure where the guidance is or what to do next before we go to the public?
I feel like I got a pretty good idea. We'll have to talk among ourselves and...
Of course.
Understand that more fully, but I think the points are good.
All right, Alex, one more thing?
As you know, this is, these are, I put together some comments on this plan, I don't, I don't, they're not necessarily all inclusive of all the comments that are going to be made. In other words, the comments that have been discussed tonight may not be all the comments which are made on the plan, and certainly people shouldn't feel concluded by them. I mean, for instance, I, at some point, we're going to have to discuss the parking study and the fact that Elliot Street attains an F level at certain times, and they suggested that the solution was to ban parking on Central Avenue in a certain amount, and that would just lose parking spaces for the rest of the business district. And I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that, I mean, there has to be a solution, but it isn't going to be a solution that ends up losing parking for the other businesses.
Alex, I thought that the F level of service would occur if all three sites were built out...
With a hundred and forty...
No, I just want to finish.
Person...
But it's on the south side, the south side, southbound direction on Central Ave, not on Elliot Street. So coming in from Boston is where the F level of service would be in the spaces that were proposed to be eliminated. If that occurred, would be the spaces on Central Avenue of budding one, the proposed property. So there's two or three spaces there that would be eliminated in order to create a right turn onto Elliot, have a direct lane to go up Central Ave, and have a left lane to take a left onto Elliot. So it's not all the spaces up Elliot's.
No, no, I wasn't suggesting it was. It is a certain number of spaces, but you do make a good point, that now that a restaurant is proposed, the parking study has to be revised to take into...
We're not promoting a restaurant.
I understand that, but you're saying that you're, you're using the 36 Central Avenue parking study, which says that there is going to be an apartment building at Fallon, but now it's going to be a restaurant, so you're, the study that you say shows that your parking is fine, which assumes a residential, it isn't even your study.
There's been, there's been a recent change with the status of Fallon acknowledged, but that study is a study that considered the three sites built out to its maximum under the PUD zoning. Now, it did not consider a restaurant, but now that there is a restaurant, there's going to have to be an adjustment. Now, I did discuss at a previous meeting that I'd bring in Jack Gilman at the proper time to talk about the parking and trap, if we ever, and I think, you know, we're starting to, but when we get a building in place, we'll, we'll address that.
So why don't we listen to the public first?
In any event, there are issues.
There are issues. We'll listen to the public first, and then when we set a new date for the next, the continuation of the hearing, we can talk about what we'd like to be on the agenda at that time. So, the few gentlemen will step back, and then we'll have the members of the public come forward.
Yeah.
I'm assuming there are some people who'd like to speak. So, would anybody like to join us, Margaret? As usual, identify yourself and state your, identify yourself and state your address for the cameras.
Margaret, excuse me, Margaret 141 Central Avenue. And I'm going to butt it to this project, too, as well as number thirty-six. All two people are watching and on TV. I concur with everything that was said tonight by the members of this board, everything. I was a little bit confused when Mr. Conley mentioned, well, it's through his spokespeople, that the project had gone through the Milton Revitalization Committee, the Milton Town Committee, Milton Hill Town Committee, and the Columbine. I'm a member of the Columbine, and I never went to any meeting in which this project was discussed, so I am somewhat confused about that statement. I think that Mr. Conley should be commended for taking on a project of this size, and especially with the demolition that he's going to have to, demolition work that he's going to have to engage in. But that building is massive, massive. It looks to me like a Section Eight public housing project. I hope it doesn't turn into that. The materials, the brick, the brick, and then the siding. We're back to the issues of 36 Central Avenue. The landscaping is important, and I agree that you wait until after the building is done. I would, I would ask that in addition to Mr. Whiteside's bowling green, that shuttle wood and washos be included in the plan. Naturally, I'm kidding.
Good suggestion.
The, the fact the building is so boxy and looks like what the original plan for DeWolff Building was going to be, which to me looked not only like public housing, but also like a shoe factory. Is there anything that can be done to soften the appearance of that building as you come down Elliot Street? Because it just glares right at you. Could there not be a rounded top, I don't know what you mean, by cupola, but soften that square boxy look of the building itself by putting a round...
A metal tower?
A round element.
That was part of the first design, was the round tower.
Yeah.
They've got it right behind them. Tell us what you think of that, Margaret.
Excuse me. This, this absolutely is an improvement, but it's not on that plan over there.
Yep, well, let, let, let her finish first.
I'm basically finished, because there isn't very much more that I have to add, because you members of the planning board dealt with all of those issues that are extremely important to, to the building.
Eddie, you had a question for her?
If you go down to East Milton and look at the post office, Cupola, there are ways to trick the eye. It's a square that they put, on each ninety degrees, they put a one eighty decorative piece, and pretty soon it's, when you come to the top, it's rounded to the top. So it fools the eye. It's still a box, but you put the elements around, it softens it up dramatically. Take a look next time you go down, Margaret.
I shall. All right, I don't think there's anything more that I have to add, because you really touched upon all the important pieces, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak? And again, identify your name and address for the cameras.
Jim McCabe, 136 Elliot Street. I'm right across from the project that they're going to develop. The one thing I want to know, the parking again, coming in and out, that's back end at night, too, with lights coming around, you know, the parking lot would kind of face it hit my house.
Right.
And the front entrance, is that, would be directly across from 136 Elliot, is that where it would be?
Did you hear, did you hear those two questions?
Across the street.
It was 136 from my house.
No, I'm next to the parking lot right here, yellow steeplehouse. Straight across, right?
It may be a little bit further up, I have to...
Yeah, and, and... And you're going to have trees or something going into that parking lot?
On the street, I think we're doing a screen in there.
And I'm concerned about coming out, too, at night with lights. How's that going to work?
Well, the entrance for the parking lot is up away from...
From my house?
Yes.
But it's still the turn, it's still going to be a turn there.
It's going to be lights.
So, so as you relook at the parking and the siding, maybe consider it in relation to his, yeah, check the sightlines on the area.
That's my main concern, and I'm for the part.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. I am Cheryl Togias. I live at 660 Canton Avenue. I have been an architect for 25 years, and I'm responding to Alex's request for architect's input. I did send some comments via email at the prior meeting, but I just did want to maybe add a little to, to that comment. Two things that I think could be improved quite a bit. First of all, I think, obviously, this development of this property and the removal of the existing building will be a great improvement to the neighborhood in general, to Milton overall. And I think it really has an opportunity to enhance the, the nice improvements that have already occurred in this part of town. I'm concerned, though, about the building being so close to the sidewalk and presenting itself with such a vertical plane on the sidewalk, and there's two things about that. I think the pedestrian experience of it, you're going to have people who are coming and going to the T station, but also people coming and going to the bicycle trail, and hopefully to the retail that'll occupy the first floor. And you come out to a pretty small sidewalk that already has trees on it, and there's really not a lot of space. I think it would be nicer to have a bit more space that would be more welcoming to that pedestrian activity. And I agree with Pete that parking at the T with a blank wall there with a grill on it is not very inviting for a transit-oriented development site and building. So I think those things should be looked at. And I think there's plenty of room on the site. I think the building is, there's plenty of site to work with that volume. I don't think it has to be so vertical at the sidewalk level. I think it, it will be a massive building, but doesn't, as it's currently proposed, but I don't think it's necessary that it be massive. I think if it were set back away from the property line a little bit, maybe it wouldn't require the setbacks that have been suggested are necessary. But that's something that really could be looked at with some massing analysis. And if it does stay where it is on the property line, maybe it is more important to have setbacks at some level. And then, again, on the materials, I think you have to look at scale at a number of different levels. So to have a building that goes up on the T side at least 50 feet without a change in plane, you can articulate it, but it's still going to be a pretty vertical wall. And I think the same thing on Elliot Street. So I personally don't think that a building, change in material only is enough to articulate a building that's over 50 feet tall. And then, lastly, back on the pedestrian scale, if a restaurant does go into the first floor, I think it's important to think about how that really works. How do you service a restaurant? There are deliveries, there's trash, there's ventilation, you'll have smells, you know, so we're, in many urban areas, you have to take that ventilation all the way up through the building, and if you don't plan for it in advance, it's very hard to come back and do later. And that way, you'll avoid having ventilation right at the sidewalk, right above your head, if it stays where it is in its current location.
Great, thank you very much. Does anybody else want to speak? All right.
I, I do think that the, the point about deliveries and trash for a restaurant, actually, for any business, deliveries and trash are an issue, and we would want to know, it is sort of the dumpster location, all these things.
Right. And we've certainly talked about that with the others as well, so that's important.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it is an important part of the plan.
In fact, as I recall, the dumpster location for both Two Adams Street and 36 Central took up quite a bit of time, so, so that one as well, how you're going to get rid of the trash and deliveries. Anything else? Bill, I think our plate for the 12th is fairly full, and that's only a week away anyway. Would the 26th be more appropriate for you to come back? Is that enough time?
Yeah, I think 26th.
Bill, do we have anything else on the 26th? We haven't scheduled anything else for the 26th. Okay, so let's, sorry.
Go to the first one in June.
Yeah, what is the first one in June?
The ninth.
The ninth, the ninth? Okay, 6:40 again on the ninth. And then if we can make a note to try not to put anything else on the schedule for June 9th, that would be good. All right, so 6:40, June 9th. Anything else for this meeting, gentlemen? Not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have a, I have a, a request from the building inspector.
Oh, okay.
The question is whether or not a service enterprise can go in to 36 Central as a business use. And what is the service, the suggested use, Bill?
Day spa.
Day spa as commercial use?
A day spa would be what?
Nails.
Massages and nails.
Massages. Massages, possibly hair, depending on whether or not, come on, you don't know these things. Facials.
Look, I wanted you to put it on the record.
Put it on the record. Thank you, thank you.
In the special permit, you have down there office and retail.
Ah.
And owner, somebody who wants to purchase one of the units has come following, and they are, they, they run a day spa.
Okay.
Day spa is going to be sews, nails, potentially tanning. I don't know exactly what else. I'm going to defer to, I'm just calling.
They have gentleman's quarterlies at many of these, where you can get your own nails and facials done, I'm just saying.
Okay, let me just say what the permit says. I mean, the, the zoning-
Right.
Says you can have a business use except for car establishments, sexually oriented businesses. The zoning says the residential, the, the commercial condominium unit shall be exclusively for retail or office use, and then it goes on to say, office and retail use may be for purposes permissible under the zoning, provided that a restaurant use shall not be permitted without amendment of this special permit, indicating to me that the restaurant use presumably was, could have fit within the retail use-
Right.
-that the permit references.
Until we specifically prohibited that one.
Until we prohibited it. So I, I thought that, my own feeling was that retail means basically service to retail customers, and it does not require sale of goods only.
I would agree with that.
Since it's a walk-in business, it'd be a retail kind of business.
Right.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I think so.
Okay, the building inspector is going to want a letter from us, and I will pin something next time. And the other thing I will pin, pending receipt from you.
Yes, I owe you something. I'm sorry.
All right.
I, I realized that last night, and then realized I didn't have enough time to do it. I will get it to you.
Okay.
Anything else?
I move for adjourn.
Privileged motion, second? All in favor?
All right.
And who has my drawings? Awesome. Great, gentlemen, we're adjourned. See you next week.